Okay, I will call to order the January meeting of Crew Town Council, January eleventh, twenty twenty-one. At this time, I will ask that we all take a moment of silence and if you could just reflect on some of the individuals that we've lost, especially Ronald Dunn and Margaret Wagner. Thank you. If everyone would stand for the flag. Flag allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I will... Are there any additions to the agenda? Any council member want to add anything to the agenda?
I'd like to add an item to the agenda.
Okay.
To discuss the current opening that's in the street department and whether we should refill it or not.
Okay, let's make that number, uh, letter C under new business.
Chicks?
And we'll call that Personnel. Uh, Councilman Yates?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about chickens.
Chickens, okay, we will make that letter D under New Business. Anything else? Sean?
No.
Okay. Going once, going twice, sold. Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes and agenda. Well, first, are there any comments, questions, concerns about the minutes? I need it. Breathe, sorry. Comments, questions, concerns about the minutes?
Motion approved.
Motion by Councilman Abel, seconded by Councilman Yates, all in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. Uh, public comments? Are there any members of the public who wish to, um, go over public comments?
I'd like to say something tonight.
Yes, sir!
Oh, I'm most of you know who I am, Val from Five Follies.
You won't, though.
You've been introduced.
You what?
You've been introduced.
I am.
About a year or so ago, maybe a little longer, I addressed the council on some of the problems the Five Follies has now and in the future. And I've been to just about all the council meetings and sat here quietly and listened to all the agendas. And brought up one thing, about hydrants in the town. We just had a fire on Carolina Avenue and to supplement our water supply with tank trucks. Same thing as the rest of them we've had. I worked out a deal with Tony and Wade about testing the hydrants to see what kind of flow they had. Gave Tony all the equipment that needed, hadn't heard anything from him. So, uh, I talked about the problems with the volunteers that we're having nowadays. Um, as you know, you're not vulnerable, we go do riots right now, they got a sign of volunteer duty. Uh, media signs all over the county looking for volunteer firefighters. Right now, uh, we're doing pretty good at Crew. Uh, but that changed overnight. But, uh, Burford, I think they've been through three or four volunteers now, all paid. Uh, squad at St. Zane's. Uh, hadn't heard anything out of anybody about addressing that. Uh, I did talk about maybe y'all will try to come up, will help come up with some ideas of helping volunteer state fire department, like, uh, some kind of reward system or something. Hadn't heard anything out of that. So, what makes me feel about the sitting idle now, I don't want, I have met with Brian a couple times, and I don't want to take away the good that he's done so far, because we've got rid of some of the dilapidated hoses and some of the properties look a lot better. But there's problems here in this fire department. We're doing, we're answering calls right now, but we're going to answer them six months from now. Now, are we going to be proactive or reactive? So far, we're reactive. And, uh, I feel hurt and, uh, I just feel like y'all turned your back on us. So, is there a fire committee?
Uh, there is not.
There used to be one, years ago, and I don't know what happened to it, but that doesn't surprise me with Donna Wayman there. So, anyway, uh, I just want to thank y'all for your help this year.
Thank you. Uh, Chief, if you would, uh, stand up, I know council members have a couple questions. To explain committees, um, council was going to talk about the issue of committees at our, um, extended work session, which we had to postpone until, uh, January, so it's in about two weeks. So, we will, uh, we will be discussing that. I know in the past, it wasn't necessarily a fire committee, it was a public safety committee that involved both the fire department and police department oversight. Um, I think that was, um, done away with and/or merged into the personnel committee. It's, it's something we should definitely look into in the future. When you say reward system, uh, what do you mean by that?
What do you, what do you say now?
When you say reward system for the, for the volunteers, what do you mean by that?
Well, I know the county, we, we asked the county, and the county agreed to exempt a vehicle for personal property. Um, we used to get a free town tag, of course, that was done away with.
Really?
Yeah, they, they did used to have town tags, we don't have town tags anymore.
Do they still get the credit? Because we still pay the fee, we just don't have tag.
I don't believe there is currently a fee.
There's not? Okay, never mind.
So, um, you know, something to maybe try to help, you know, Burford pays their volunteers like twenty dollars a call or something like that, Blackstone pays their people fifteen, twenty dollars a call. I don't know if that'll help or not, volunteerism has disappeared in this country like gangbusters. Um, you know, I, I mentioned, uh, mentioned that we have been operating in the red for the last three years. Uh, we will not this year because the county came up with some extra money, but the problem's still there. Blackstone just ordered a, uh, a new engine, excess of seven hundred thousand dollars for a truck. Now, granted, your crew ordered one, it's not going to cost that much, but it might be close. So, we don't have the resources anymore, and I get any help from y'all or the county.
Uh, budget season is coming up, um, would you be willing to sit down with the town manager and with some others? Well, first, I guess, talk to your department and see if a reward system, if they think that that would generate additional, um, volunteer support, um, and if so, what that would cost, how, so I guess multiply the, uh, the number of, uh, of volunteers to respond to a call, times the average number of calls, um, so we can get a, you know, good figure on some of that. And maybe present some, and, and we could sit down, maybe potentially with the committee, and discuss some of these, uh, ideas, um, as we go through the budgeting process.
You know, these, these guys, just like, I don't want to take anything away from the police department, these guys, we, we lay our lives on the line just as much as they do. The last fire that we had on Carolina Avenue, we, I had like seven, eight men upstairs in a fully involved house, I had to order them out one time. Now, they're doing it for nothing.
Okay.
Doing it for nothing.
Uh, Councilman Davis, I have a, um...
I've had the opportunity to talk Jordan a hundred times, I know Wendy Hayes, and a lot of these things, I know he had talked to me once about the hydrants, and he was gonna, we were gonna get together and he was gonna bring me, I think he already had a map of where the, the worst pressure hydrants were, and then he held up and said, "You guys were getting ready to do something." I'd be more than willing, Mr. Mayor, to be on whatever kind of committee or council you're gonna put together, to have these guys in their house and talk about the issues that they've got and, and what their ideas for solving are, and if they come back to council, and between the two trying to work towards this, he's exactly right. I mean, one of these days, we're going to get a call, and nobody's gonna answer, and somebody's gonna be killed by it. I don't know how that affects your budget, because I wasn't here for budgeting last time, uh, but I made a statement several months ago that the first priority of this council was always going to be the public safety for our community, and I volunteer to meet with them and anybody else that wants to go, sit down with the fire department guys.
Well, let's, uh, if I can make this suggestion, that we, uh, we include this, uh, that we include this on the, um, uh, as one of the points of discussion for our extended work session on, uh, the, uh, the third issue.
I get that, but though we needed, even in lieu of that, or, or in addition to that, I think that there's, they feel like there's a communication problem.
Sure, absolutely.
Coming every month, maybe it would help ease that, because, and again, I volunteer to be that contact where we can communicate more than just the council, where they feel like we're, we're hearing what they're saying, and whether we can do what they want or not's a different story.
Absolutely, okay.
It would be years and years and years that I would address the town council and then come back and say, "We don't have any money." I told Wade about six months before he left, "We're not doing business like that anymore. That's not the right answer no more." But, uh, you know, the protocol, uh, with the structure fires here in town, I told the other two chiefs to bring their tank truck, bring a tank truck toward urban fire. The fire chief in Burford came and asked me on Carolina Avenue, "What do you need? I need a tank truck, you need to go back and get it."
Um...
Now, whether we can do something about that, I don't know. Uh, that, you're talking a lot of money fixing the water lines in here, but that hydrant on Carolina Avenue could operate two hand lines, and then it was, that's all it can give. So...
Vice Mayor?
Okay, uh, yeah, Val, I talked to you, I came up to the fire department and we talked about, one of y'all's big issues was the housing, and, um, I brought it up last time, it kind of got shut down on, under the last council. I'm planning on bringing it up again, uh, this year. I talked to Tony about the hydrants, and he said that he talked to you and said that it isn't the hydrants, they replaced a few hydrants.
I know it's not the hydrants, it's the water lines, but I knew what that line, water line is going to give that hydrant.
Yeah, he said they replaced a few hydrants, but it isn't the hydrants, it's the water lines, and there was no use in them replacing more hydrants when the water wasn't getting to them.
Uh-huh.
And he said he talked to you about that, and then we were gonna talk about, I was gonna bring it up in the planning session, I know before it was, they replaced so many lines each year. I know a few had been replaced, um, Jordan was telling me about a map that he had...
The map, the map is no good to us, until Tony and them test the hydrants.
Okay.
Because we, when we went on this system over there, we colored them all orange because we did, we knew that they won't, that's about what they were, but we don't know. I want to be able to pull up to a fire and look at that hydrant and see what color the top load is and know what kind of flow is on that hydrant.
I, I get it, and I, I brought it up to get them to test it, and then you guys gave them the tool to test it.
Called the codes, the tools, gave them everything they needed.
Exactly, and, um, from what he told me, it was the water line issue on most of them. Now, they said that there is a several that flow good that are close to the highway, but I totally understand, we had the same issue with Second Street House Fire. Wasn't that correct?
That's right, all, last three big structural fire we've had, and then we've had to supplement with tank trucks.
Yes, and then, uh, so, I was under the understanding that Tony had gotten with you and explained that to you, and we were looking at that.
He did, but that's not what we, that's not what I'm asking, I know the lines are not in account.
Gotcha.
But I want to know what that hydrant will flow.
We, we went through all this, and that's what brought all this up, was the goal was to have every fire hydrant flow tested.
Yes.
Then, I guess, apparently, it never does.
Um, just to, uh, get things back on order, Vice Mayor, if you would, uh, own this project and work with the town manager and the chief and Tony or whoever, the town manager and the chief, um, to own this project and find a resolution?
Gotcha.
Do you have something to say?
I do.
Councilman?
Being that you brought up the hydrants, I'm going to say this back up, since we are going to be having an extended work session in the next couple of weeks, and Sean offered to, you know, I guess maybe be basically a liaison, somebody you could speak to, to bring this to the table, I would think it would be very important, in very short order, maybe in the next week or so, for you to make a list of all the things that you need, delineate, line them out, so, and put on there even, and maybe prioritize them by, you know, what you wish it could be, what you, what your minimum is, blah, 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 so that when we meet as, as an extended group, we can deal with those issues. Because right now, you're working under an entire new council, you're working with an entire, everything here has changed, our, our upper management has changed too. So, with that being said, I think it's important for that communication to be.
I guess, I guess my biggest frustration and the Five Follies frustration is the town manager, the mayor, the council, do y'all have communications with whoever runs the water plant? Do you have communications with your police chief, the water sewer, Tony? Do you talk to them? Sure you do, sure you do. Do you talk to the fire department? No. No.
We're gonna fix that.
Okay, um, just, uh, Sean and Susan, would you meet with the, uh, chief before the, uh, the next, um, or before the, uh, extended plan, the, the retreat, whatever we call it, um, and come to the retreat with a, um, list of specific, uh, um, solutions, because again, you're the expert on, uh, fire issues, we, you know, we will, you know, take your advice and see what, uh, what it is, and, uh, if you can prioritize those, uh, those issues, and we'll, uh, discuss them as a, as a group at the extended work session.
Thank you, it's all right, sorry.
Thank you, and, I'm sorry, uh, Councilman...
Extremely brief question, how old do you have to be to volunteer for the fire department?
They take them in at sixteen.
Okay, thank you.
They can't fight fire, but they go in the train until they eighteen.
Okay, and now, do you know if there's any programs with, like, SBCC where they can receive college credit for participating in any of the programs?
Not right now, there's been talk within the county and, uh, maybe starting another program at the school, but that hasn't, uh, hasn't...
Okay.
Not if I...
One other quick thing?
Briefly, yes ma'am.
Brian, I'm, I think, I think this is kind of a silly question, but maybe not for Val. This, what do you call it, the program that writes grants for us now, C R C? Okay, aren't, wouldn't they be a valuable resource for the needs of the fire department?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, um, there are so many grant cards available for specific purposes that you could get.
That would be an avenue to, to look into, okay.
That, that is an issue too, they just got notification of a possible FEMA grant, and they're looking for someone to write the grant.
Well, the FEMA grants are open, we looking into putting in a grant, and we hadn't decided what we're going to ask for, we just spent eighteen thousand dollars on some rescue tools that we needed for this bad accident we had down here, but we spending five programs money on that because we need to spend it anyway, but, uh, just a FEMA grant, it's, it's open now, if, if you want to put in one, that's the time to do it. But, uh, anyway, that's all I got to say, I'll leave you all alone, I'm not saying anymore for another year or two.
Thank you, Chief, well, we'll, uh, Councilman, or Vice Mayor, that's the one project, and then Councilman Davis and Councilman Yates will, uh, meet with you, uh, soon, within the next week.
And I will, uh, I, I will tell you, we held lectures last month, and pretty much all the offices are the same, but in two years, it's going to be a complete change up there. This is my last hurrah, which is, and it is with a lot of the other older guys too, so we're gonna have a complete turnaround, and we're gonna try to have the guys ready for it, so, but anyway, all right, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
Val? Jordan's got my information.
And are there any other public comments?
I'll try to, sure.
No? Oh, yes ma'am.
My name is Phyllis Smith, and, um, I noticed that you had something to do with Lipscomb Street and fire there. Um, my husband and I are willing to settle with the town, but what you're asking of us is that we relieve you of all responsibility as to the easement on the property. Uh, you're telling us that it's, the state is supposed to take over and that's supposedly there, the state is telling us that the easement is the responsibility of the town. Now, if we settle with you and the state decide they're not going to come in and take over, we are left with the problem, that's what we are, we are left with that problem. It wasn't the state that put eminent domain on our property and came in and put that drainage ditch into the middle of the property, it was the town approved. We as taxpayers, we pay our taxes, we maintain our property, all we ask is that the town live up to their responsibilities or what they're done. We're settled to, I know the trees, the trees were cut down, the fence went down, these things can be negotiated as to a settlement, but when it comes, nobody telling us what's going to happen concerning that hole in the back of the yard, that's a problem, because all the town has to do is have a crew come in there, clean out that hole, so that there won't be a breeding ground for mosquitoes, that's all we were asking and concerned with that hole in the property. And we just get turned off like, "Take this money, go your way, we don't have anything to do with it." And it's not, it's, it's not our problem, it's a problem the town has for us to have, not one that we made, but you want us to feel like we're coming after the town, when the town is not living up to their responsibility, that's the way I feel. That's, just like you say, the town is concerned about the safety of the community, there are mosquitoes there, spring is coming. All we ask is that the town does something to help us, even if you think that it's the state's responsibility, you could say, "Well, we're going to work with you, we'll get a crew out there, we'll try to clean it up, and we'll work with you," but nobody never did that, nobody ever talked to us, they sent, you send your lawyer to us, but nobody from the town, from the committee, ever sit down and talk to us and find out what we are going through. And just like you want to send people to talk with the fire chief, why don't you have some members sit down and talk with us? That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. Um, any other public comments?
Yeah, I'm going to go too.
Yes, sir!
Well, my wife can say it different, you know, and I told her before, you know, I'm getting tired of it quick, because this is a thing that's been going on for a long time, and nobody else stepped up and said that who was wrong. You feel like the town is, uh, they, like, they blaming me for what the problem is, yeah. Your, uh, your representatives, all your companies, always sending letters and things to me, yelling about the court and this and that. This problem was just dealt with the, with the property, they came in, they damaged the property, and that's what was talking about, the damage that they done, which, if they don't know where Stradon Street is, I'm so very sorry, but the alley was not Stradon Street, they built a house that's facing the alley, but it's not Stradon Street, Stradon Street is one that comes off the highway, bang on through. The only two streets come in there off the highway that the state are going to take maintenance of, and that's Stradon and Lipscomb, but they got to bring Stradon Street up to, hard for the state, uh, state to take it over. I don't know why they choose to go into the alley, but my property don't have anything to do with Stradon Street when it came into it, none. My property come in, that day in, my property moved from Lipscomb to Stradon, I got a block, my property, my property is about a block long from, from Stradon to Lipscomb, or down in the bottom, where Lipscomb was, where Stradon supposed to, supposed to come, that's what the state was told the town about, I think they had a meeting him with some contract, like I said before, and the contract was actually being beat from start, maybe all had been beat from start, they did all this kind of thing when it came down, and they were standing, many people asked them about, "What was, what was the price that you got to do Stradon Street?" They said six hundred thousand dollars to do Stradon, and I was here at that meeting when they had it, but, but back to me, they didn't want to pay that six hundred thousand dollars to get Stradon brought into the state maintenance, and they went over to the alley, and that's what it, that's when we came in, and that's where the problem started. They telling me the state was going to take it over, I don't talk to the state, I don't talk to the, I don't talk to the, uh, the management, maintenance management that's supposed to be this area here, maintenance man, y'all got Paul Henson from down here, and not a way, he was not the maintenance manager of this area, he was rural, he was a rural man of the land management, that was rural. I don't know what, what they told you, but I talked to the maintenance manager, state would not take that place over the alley, they, they confessed and kept hold of it, they're not, they don't come into private property. So, we've been dealing with this, trying to get it sorted, and I'm getting, I'm getting to a point now, I'm getting tired of that, that's been going on since, what, 2017, 2016? Nobody wanted to sit down and talk to us, explain things, with Wade with him, now everybody is, they begin to disappear, fade out, some are retiring, some are leaving, they letting some of the people that was involved in that, let them go, like the girl that, uh, Ms. Morgan, they let her go, and so forth. Now, they come down to us, we come to the town and trying to get this situation straightened up, get no answers, the only thing we're getting is that we had a right to do this, which by law they didn't, you can't put an easement on private, on private property, that's the general sum, you go, I just looked at the code on it, you cannot take this eminent domain on private property. If they do come into private property, try to make it public right away, they have to get that person a fair compensation for committing to their property. So, I'm just going to leave it at that, like I said, I'm just let y'all think about it, because as you said, we're willing to sit down with some of the rules of the town and go with this thing, because I'm sitting there in front of courts and all this stuff, for what? That's what, wait, for what? What is up with this about? This ain't about the lane, this about something else. I should be had to go face somebody in a court, this, only thing they could go to court for is find out that I, that I got fair compensation for the damage they done to the property, that was me. So, I'm going to leave it at that, so, I feel, I feel this discussion with some of y'all, but I tried to get a, a scratch with the manager, uh, town manager, he wasn't there at that time, so, I don't know, I'm getting tired of that, I was being sent to my house, and I got my, your, your representative there, he was sending, sending love to my house and saying, "I got dirty hands." No, I'm, I got, what my dirty hands come from? I don't have no dirty hands, for what? For me, questioning me, what they did, that's what I got dirty hands for? I can understand that, and then I was necking him, sure we were, I was necking him, and that. See, I don't feel like you get love like this to me, coming to me, telling me, or thing like that. I never gave the town, not, what a problem, paid my taxes, did what I got to do, but now, I'm facing a situation, going through this, my, 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 I'm trying to work through enough emotional distress and things behind this stuff. Y'all going through this and that, but look, look what I said about the damage they done about, that one called the town nothing, because I could have dealt with that, like I told you, you know, but that problem you got there now is stuck, you didn't want it anywhere, y'all, but I got pictures of it, like, to show, let y'all see these pictures before and after, and what they did when it came down and when it hit the property. My property was not Stradon Street, Stradon Street wasn't in the state, my alley wasn't in the state, but these pictures are showing what my property look like now, you want to go drain this ditch in your backyard, in the middle of your yard? No, no, you want to my crew and that to destroy your property and put on... You won't, to my crew that can destroy your property and put on a thing, a drainage dish right in your property, water gets thrown in there, rain in the middle of my backyard, you know? That's what I'm, it's what's going to get you so upset. And nobody, it's all called on Jeff here. Like I told her, I just because fear of doing that, I'm a black man, speaking up for what is right. Nobody wants to hear it. Saying, well, we got all the problems going on today. Nobody listens. But afraid they gonna lose something. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none, we will move on to review of bills. Any comments, questions, concerns on the bill sheet? Town manager's report.
Uh, yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, we do have my report attached, uh. I want to defer everything, just a reminder, this weekend we have, uh, neighbor, uh, cleanup day, starting at nine o'clock at Town Hall. We, uh, anybody that's willing to participate, we urge them, including yourselves, to participate, nine o'clock, Town Hall. Uh, let's see. Our Police Chief Al started this past Monday, so we welcome him aboard. We started, sent out a RFP for our comprehensive plan update on Friday, so we'll be starting that process in the spring to update our comprehensive plan. I did sign off on a paperwork from Wood Avenue Streetlight Project. And I'm awaiting a timeline for Dominion on that. Our oxidation ditch cleanout project, uh, will probably start sometime in mid-February. Uh, that's, that's about it.
What did we do with the game, was it two or three or one or where?
Two.
Was it one at the end of the street up there, where there already is one?
The two like y'all approved last meeting, and then the count in the middle.
I didn't know we actually heard that very well.
Okay, any other questions for the town manager? Okay, thank you, Brian. Uh, and again, everyone is encouraged to come out at nine o'clock at the town office on Saturday. Rand Ashon?
Uh, within reason, yes.
Okay. Rand Ashon, within reason. Councilwoman Stinson will be there at 10:30.
I'll be there. Well, I'll just start cleaning, I'll run it too.
Uh, mayor's report, um, the, thank you to the town manager and, uh, and Tiffany and all the town staff who were able to get that newsletter out last week. Uh, I hope everyone got their copy and enjoyed it, and I think we put it in several businesses. Perfect. Uh, so, everyone can keep track of what we're doing in various ways, um, online. Um. Any other questions?
No, just a comment about the letter. I've received, um, multiple phone calls into my home about people being so pleased about it. It really portrayed and concerned image for the town council and the town, so I think it was great.
Very good.
Had nothing but compliments.
Sounds good, well, we have funding for, uh, for three more in with that, uh, that grant from DCJS. And speaking of DCJS, uh, chief. Um, Brian stole my thunder, but, uh, if anyone who, uh, has not met our new police chief yet, Alfredo Prer, uh, Prar, is right here. Um, feel free to introduce yourself, uh, yourselves to him, um, but he's, uh, off to a great start. Um, any comments, questions, concerns for me? Hearing none. Town chairman's report.
Yes, thank you, I permed if you all the report last week. I would like to very briefly address council and close that from regarding, uh, community motivation.
Okay, without objection, we will add a closed session after number 11 on the agenda. Uh, for 2.2 dash 3711A7, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I'll confirm that before.
Okay, perfect, libiation. Um. New business, uh, personnel policy 4.2, holidays, request approved amendments, uh, Brian?
Uh, yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, um, this is just a pretty simple amendment to our policy. There's been, as you know, some changes to the state holiday schedule this past year, some additions, some deletions. So they're trying to get everything to mesh up, which I assume was kind of the intention when, when whichever council adopted this policy, is to mesh this up as best with the state holiday calendar if that's possible, so, um, that's, that's what you have here.
Okay, so, uh, if you look at, uh, that in your agenda, basically it strikes everything, it just says the town follows state holiday schedule, including any additional time offered by the governor. Of course, as you remember, this year we had two additional days, one by the General Assembly, which changed the calendar anyway, but one by the governor granting additional time, so they would have been included in this. Are there any comments, questions, concerns about, um, this change? Okay, uh, and then at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve via the change to the personnel policy regarding holidays. Motion by Councilman Abel.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Stinson, any discussion?
Works good, I can tell you, we have a real way.
Perfect. Uh, and it's easy for everyone to, uh, to see. Um. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Question carries, thank you, Brian. Uh, next up on the agenda, item 9B, Councilor Peter Denna, agenda request by me. Um. So we have the, uh, retreat agenda on there, I just wanted to give council the opportunity to, um, discuss it because I know everyone who, uh, wanted to, uh, had a conversation with our facilitator, Kim Ping, uh, who then came up with this agenda. And, um, just wanted to give everyone the opportunity to discuss it as a whole and agree on it, uh, before we move forward. Also, at this time, I think we may be entertaining some alternatives for location or time, Brian, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I think, uh, a couple of y'all have, um, expressed some concern about having it out of town, given the rise in COVID cases here recently, so I guess, uh, option for council to consider. The, the initial, um, intention in which y'all approved on the budget was to have this held out of town, which is the ideal situation, but, um, a couple of y'all have expressed concerns about having it out of town, given the rise in COVID cases. So the alternative to that is just to hold it here in the town in a more secure-ish environment, if that's what y'all want to do as a whole.
Okay, I will look up to the, uh, to the floor.
Well, I'm one that was very concerned about, um, going to a hotel and restaurants, um, with the numbers the way they are, it's been impossible to schedule. And the town manager's done a valiant job, and right when we thought things were gonna be better, they're even worse than they were back when we had the first concern, so. I, I guess this is just not the year for it, but it's important work, am I?
Would your concerns be alleviated, and would you be able to attend if it was in town?
I feel a lot better.
Okay.
I also was one that expressed concern. I have some concern, I mean, I'm gonna be there and participate regardless, but I am extremely concerned about it.
Okay. And if, so you'd be there regardless, okay?
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions, concerns?
Well, I'll speak up, I'm I'm not concerned about being out of town, I'll, I'll say, say that out loud. Um, I think that in or out of town, there's no reason why we can't be wise and prudent in our decisions about wearing masks and doing the social distancing and doing, doing the things we need. Um, the very few times I've been out to dinner, and I have been out to dinner over the last few months, um, I find that the restaurants are very, very accommodating, they keep people apart in the restaurants. Um. I find, I've, I've not found a server yet that doesn't wear a mask and keep her or his self-social distance, so I just, on personal note, I think going out of town is a good idea.
Okay, any other comments, questions, concerns?
I think it's an improved use of taxpayer dollars, I don't think there's any reason that we can't have a work session without spending a dime right here. That's what I have felt the whole time, just wanna be on the record.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay. Um, anyone else? So, on the issue of where to hold it, in town or out of town? Um. Let's, uh, take a quick straw poll, uh, in town? In town, if you're?
Being the only way I'll be able to go, and I'm not certain in, cause of my wife.
Okay, right, right, and you prefer in town, Councilman Foss?
I'm not sure.
Okay, you need to come to a decision tonight, so we can let our facilitator know, and we can make adjustments and cancel hotel reservations.
I, I don't know. I care one way or the other about whether it's apocalyptic territory or it's a, you know, wherever. We don't get the opportunity to have the open discussion and at any to debate and consider and discuss honestly and openly without a camera on and folks in the audience. We have to play the game too often here, anything else that we do above and beyond that is then, you know, more issues to be here, three day or whatever. But I think you're gonna be pretty hard pressed to get us to sit in this room from nine o'clock in the morning until four o'clock in the afternoon, and then again from nine o'clock in the morning until two o'clock in the afternoon. The whole purpose in a retreat is to take people out of that zone. And I don't care if it's here, if it's in Burford at the, whatever you call it, the lake, you know, something other than this room. We've got some big things to discuss. And, and, you know, and then Val just added more to that. I mean, I don't know. I, I'm not concerned about the COVID, my wife works in it every day of the week. I have to worry about that coming in, and I can't get, oh, my gosh, it's COVID, uh, about these things. I mean, we're all going to the grocery store, we're all doing the things that have been done up in most parts, so that's not a concern for me. I'm concerned that we still make sure that we do this in a way that everybody feels like it's a group where we can talk, and we can get through this stuff. We've got some really important items to discuss on there.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are people not participating because it's out of town? So, you're not going, right?
No, not.
Would you go if it was in town?
Possibly.
And Billy said he can't go if it's out of town, and he's not comfortable going out of town, so if half our council is not gonna be able to participate if it's out of town, doesn't that, doesn't that kind of make the decision right there?
Yeah, well, council makes the decision right here.
The distinction to me there is chooses versus can't. Apology, we're gonna be waiting on for a whole weekend either, but.
Well, I for one was really looking forward to it, in my situation, but, um, health was more important than that.
I'm also looking forward to it, I'm with my kids all day.
Okay, um, if it was moved in town, would council agree to stay completely focused on the work at hand? And not, you know, running off and, you know, running this area because we have, you know, a five-minute break or what have you?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, I have been the attendee of many of these types of retreats in my past business life. And taking people outside of their environment is a very important part of the process because it eliminates a lot of outside, it just.
Yes, but there was not a pandemic going on then, I agree with you under the circumstances.
Can we take a vote on it?
Let's, uh, and, and we'll just say we shouldn't let perfection be the enemy of good. So, we need to have this, and we need as much participation as possible, so. Good, Brian?
From my perspective, yes, it is ideal, and that was the intention setting this up for all the reasons that, that Councilmember, um, Davis and Nick says, uh, yes. Ideally, in a non-pandemic situation, we would go out of town, but I would rather ha, the, the goal is to have as much participation as possible, so if we start getting to a retreat where half the council is not there, we're not accomplishing much, so. Yes, I would love to have it out of town, but if we start losing one or two more members, we're defeating the purpose of the retreat in the first place.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Why couldn't you postpone a little while to see what's going on?
We've, we've already postponed.
We, we tried that six months ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and we're, we're still here. So, uh, yes, real quick.
Okay, I'm indifferent, I'm good either way, and I commit to be in here and participating to the fullest.
Okay.
So, I, I'm, that, I'm just putting that out there.
Thank you. Um, Eric, in town, out of town?
Um, I'm gonna abstain from the straw poll, but if we want to take a vote on it, I'll vote.
Well, let's, uh, let's take a vote on it. Uh, is there a motion on the floor? Someone needs to make a motion to either have it in town or make a motion to have it out.
Move to hold it in town.
Okay, move to hold it in town, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor to have it in town?
Aye.
Uh, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, motion carries, thank you. Um, and now, as to the agenda itself, um, we'll try to work in, um, and in fact, these are written broadly enough that we can, uh, work in goals related to the, uh, to the fire department. Um, other than that, is there any comments, questions, concerns about the agenda itself? Nope, so we're good with the agenda? Okay. That agenda is good.
What would the fire department go on, or what?
Um, just, uh.
General priorities.
Right, and discuss town operations, uh, what's happening well, what's the town not doing well? We can, uh. Okay, um, perfect. Item 9C, personnel, uh, Councilman Reed.
Yes, thanks. Um, Tony Sheldon called me, Brian, said he's upset and he needs his man, um, and that we're not gonna replace the street department open, open vacancy with another street department worker, and the council decided to hire another financial advisor for the town. I hadn't heard anything about it, I feel like if that, but, that position is budgeted in there as a line item, and I think it should be discussed versus just decided upon, if it was even decided upon, so that's why I put that on the agenda tonight.
Now, I appreciate you letting me know, and I'm gonna reiterate to our department here tomorrow, and I encourage you to, to, to read.
But he said he did, and you told him the council deci, now, just to hear say, but he said he did, and you told him the council decided that that's what it was gonna be. Maybe it's not true.
No, it's not true.
Okay.
Um, so, to, to address the question, um, usually, when positions are open and become vacant, unless it's a very critical position that needs to be filled at that place and time because it's a shift position, they work at the water plant, you're under uh, requirements from the state to have so many licensed people operate the plant, or it's a fleet position, et cetera. Um, I usually, as a rule, try to keep that position open to try to save some money, for one, salary savings. The public works department, they're not gonna see any reduction in, um, service because one person has left, has, has anybody seen any reduction in service in public works? So I usually try to keep a position open to save money, for one. Uh, two, um, we've got a lot, speaking of retreat, you got a retreat in a couple of weeks. And there are a lot of needs that the town has, in my opinion, that you could dedicate that money towards better than a public works labor position. We've got a lot of staff positions that need to be filled, or that need to be created, work instead of a public works laborer. That money could potentially be put to other priorities such as fire department needs, um, downtown improvements, you name it, so I was trying to hold a position, one, to save money, two, see what your priorities are, and have that aligned with the budget process when we put the recommended budget together for next fiscal year. Um. Three, I would also say, the, looking at, um, the revenues, putting the budget together this current year, the revenues were, just like every, in every other locality, are difficult to try to, yes, in effect, given the COVID situation. Uh, we are doing relatively well in, in revenues on, you know, from the major three, we are a little off on cigarette tax. So what I don't want to start getting into, cause I've never done it, is run deficits in fiscal years, um, money-wise with revenue, so. I always try to, the, the place where you save money is positions. Um, so, no, I didn't, I, I don't have any, we do, I, I do think possibly in the future, we should look at a finance director treasurer position, but no, that was not the reason. For all those reasons, to save money, to look at what your priorities are, see how we could possibly use that position, the money from that position in the next fiscal year, either through, for another position or go towards other projects. And let me remind y'all too, the, if you remember the, cause the General Assembly- if you remember the, because the general assembly, remember we got in this discussion last year, put a cap for the first time ever on what localities can, can levy as their cigarette tax rate. So we put it to 50, knowing that we're going to have to bump that back down to 40 cents a year, which is going to be a good hit to our budget. So we're kind of already in a hole from that standpoint going into next year. So for all those various reasons, I don't know what we're going to do with the position. I probably will hold that open to see what your priorities are, incorporate whatever that looks like in next year's budget, which ultimately would be your decision on what, what I, I may put in, you know, I may keep it the same number of positions in public work. I may say we need a full-time code enforcement officer, we need a finance director, we need this or that, that. But anyway, that's the, those are the, all the reasons why that position is not being filled.
So I was, since there's no personnel committee, I thought that council as a whole was the personnel committee, or is that not the case?
So the, uh, the town manager runs personnel, uh, outside of, um, the five appointed officials. So, correct, that word, that, that's.
Very well. Um, well, I want to make a motion that we fill that position.
Okay, motion on the table to fill a, uh, street department position? Oh, second. Second, uh, is there any discussion?
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Point of order from Councilman Davis.
Do we not already have it in our charter and code that this is within Brian's authority as a town manager? Because if we do, I can't see why we would take a motion that, uh, maybe we're all, but we're going to be countermanding what we just put in writing in the last couple of months.
We haven't changed anything yet as far as I know.
The charter has not changed, uh, yet. Um, assuming that it passes the general assembly, that starts on Wednesday, it will.
But the philosophy behind what we discussed and beat to death was Brian would have the authority to supervise, hire fire, run his shop. And we would simply be a top-down view of that.
Correct, that is how.
This not counter.
Right, so we, um.
It's a motion on the table, go ahead.
So we, uh, we do.
I thought we'd agree on that.
Generally, um, the legislate, the legislative body and the mayor oversee what I call organizational level policy via the high end stuff. Whereas administrative policy, including personnel, would fall under the town manager. But there is a, uh, there is a motion on the table. Um, any other?
And I don't mean, a clarification, I don't mean that we shouldn't hire the guy. I just think that we're being counterproductive to what we just decided.
Just if it falls under the discussion, I mean, the reason I'm making the motion is because, you know, he laid out pretty good points to me of why that position should be there. He's ran the, the town for quite a long time and I've come to respect him. And to me, it makes a lot of sense to rehire the person that we just lost for a lot of reasons that he laid out. That's why, you know, that's why I made the motion.
Could you, um, go into detail on any of those points any minute?
We can go into it offline. I mean.
Well, I, it's, uh, I think it's relevant for the, uh, for the.
Because I might agree with you.
Well, this one.
I don't even know that there was, I didn't know there was a position that wasn't there or.
He says he can't get the, get the job done efficiently with the, the guys that he has now.
Which job?
His job, performing the duties that he has to. I mean, I've got notes, I don't have them in front of me.
Tony and I just talked about this last week and he said he can perform the function just fine without that position. Ideally, our departments want every position filled and more positions.
I, I would, I would say, I will, I will vote no on it until after we have our planning session. I think we ought to stay status quo until after the planning session to see what happens.
Yeah, Councilman Abel, would you like it?
The only thing I'd say is they don't want to hire this position as they made for Tony, but he's talking about a finance director, he's talking about this. To me, it's no different. If he needs it, Tony needs his man, Brian might need this stuff. And it's all boiled down to, to me, where's the money coming from for all of it?
I, I would say this is a personnel decision that probably should be discussed in a closed session.
Uh, it doesn't, uh, unless we get into the specific job performance of an individual, it doesn't fall under personnel.
I would, um, support what Sean is saying. I think we've talked about this extensively. We've almost beat it to death. And we've given, I think that all of us have given a lot of confidence for Brian to be, to, to be able to make these judgments. And I think that we need to continue down that path. If that's where we started, this is where we need to be. And as for you, Billy, I, I understand that things have always been the way they've always been, but we're, we're embarking on a new time and a new place and new people. We've got new upper management and I think that these, I think that this man particularly over the last year has proven to all of us that he is capable of making good decisions and making a difference in our community. And as far as me, I would vote no because I want to support Brian and all the good things he's doing.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else who hasn't spoken? Anyone who has spoken, want to add anything? Hearing none, uh, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Two, and all opposed. Two, one, two, three, four, five. Sorry, can't count to that. Uh, motion fails. Okay, next up on the agenda, item nine D chickens.
No.
Councilman Yates.
Well, I've had, I had this particular man, the man that came here through our last session that, um, wanted to talk about chickens and since then, I think he's been out maybe talking to other people. Cause I've had a couple of phone calls, nothing magnanimous about the chickens. And I think they've all brought up some good points about our times. I think Jess did the most outstanding job of everybody when we were back on the chicken talk before and, and showing the advantages of having them. And here we are now sitting amidst this crisis, this COVID crisis. And for every reason during this COVID crisis that there could be, I would think chickens would be a positive thing. I do understand that there is a, the issue of how do we manage the chickens. Um, it continues to be an issue, but I don't think it's an issue that we cannot handle. We've got parts of Enrico that are allowing chickens there in, in, in city, Richmond allows chickens, Chesterfield, that, in parts of Chesterfield are allowing chickens.
There are parts of New York City that have chickens.
Yeah, and here we are out here in the country and we don't allow chickens. I mean, I think that this should not be a situation that we cannot address and manage. Now that we have somebody on board that's willing to, um, enforce ordinances and do the things that are supposed to be done to hold people accountable. So with that being said, I, you know, I just wanted to bring it up tonight. I would like to see us take it into our next meeting, the extended retreat thing, whatever you want to call it, and really have some serious discussion over this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilwoman Foss.
Um, so with the decrease, so Brian wasn't here when I originally, uh, proposed my chicken proposal way back when. So I suggested, uh, four chickens, four hens, uh, allowed in backyards fenced in, you know, cooped, all of that fun stuff with proper living conditions. And to charge a licensing fee for residents who wanted to have backyard chickens of a certain uh, dollar amount between five and $10 a year or something like that, where they had to go down to, you know, town hall to do that. Now, it's not going to be comparable to what the cigarette tax is bringing in, but it could lessen the blow a little bit if we did implement an additional stream of revenue such as backyard chickens to kind of soften the blow from having to reduce the cigarette tax.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman Davis.
I like bacon. And so I'd like to be able to have a pig in my backyard. That's a joke, but you get my point.
Yes.
I like steak, so can I just have one miniature cow in my backyard? We fought, we fought a throwdown, I was here for it in this room, over bees, not four or five years ago. I'm talking experts flown in from Richmond, beekeepers and the pros and cons. And I sit back there in the corner and I kind of laughed to myself through the whole process. I, and there's been somebody approached me about wanting to keep chickens. I get it. My roommate lives in Long Island, Smithville, he's got a chicken coop in his backyard. It's just the coolest thing ever. I just worry about the gate that we're opening. Who's going to enforce these codes? Do they wear the licenses around their necks?
We have a compliance officer whose job is to enforce our ordinances that are on the books. So now we have a designated person, which was an issue prior to, but now we do have a designated person whose job it would be to enforce that.
So when somebody comes, as they will, about that next animal or that next thing, how are we going to address that? Is there a line we put in the sand over bees?
I, I would assume we would address that if and, and when that would happen.
Okay, uh, Councilman Abel.
I do like bacon.
We have ordinance enforcement there. How many chickens in the town now?
I have no idea. I don't go to the chicken.
Nobody does.
It's a non-zero now.
That's not so.
We have a non-zero.
It's a non-zero.
But let's not, let's not get back and forth. I think that's the point he was making.
We have ordinance enforcement and you're not supposed to have chickens, but you still have them. So, you know, what she's saying, uh, let's legalize some more drugs so the town can get in revenue. We start growing marijuana and stuff, so that's.
Well, it's common. It's honestly a governor's agenda.
So, Councilwoman Yates, let's, okay, um, is there anyone else who hasn't spoken on the issue who wants to speak on the issue? I'm sorry?
I'll jump in with you.
Okay, now, now is there anyone else who has spoken on the issue who wants to speak on the issue yet?
I think it's absurd to, to compare chickens to drugs and chickens to cows, okay? I realize that we're all kind of kidding around here, but I do believe that with the proper type of guidelines down, and I would kind of disagree, Jess, with it only a five or $10 fee. If somebody really wants chickens, let them make an investment in, in their chickens. Charge them $50 or $100 to be able to do that. And set, hold on a second, guys, and, and set up the guidelines, enforcement guidelines in such a way that, that it's easy to lose your chickens if you don't do what you're supposed to do. But the bottom line is, we live in the country, we have very, lots and lots of, um, suburban, suburban houses that are, and communities that are allowing this. Um, and there's a lot of positive things about chickens, uh, which Jess did a great job at, at showing this. I was actually very amazed at your presentation. I learned a lot about chickens and when I first listened to you, I was wavering. By the time I got done listening to you and really hearing you, I could see the advantages to having chickens. So I don't think, I think we should keep the chicken discussion going.
Is there anything else? Councilman Foss and Councilman Yates, would you own this issue and come back with a specific proposal outlining exactly what the ordinance should read and how you would imagine it being enforced? I need you to look at the, uh, potential costs, uh, of personnel, uh, as, in, in addition to potential, uh, monetary gain. Uh, and work with the town manager and the chief of police, um, to come up with this proposal.
Okay.
Uh, and come up with a proposal for council to discuss. Welcome, Chief.
You've come a long way, Chief.
He did this great honeybee debate, uh, of 2012. That was, uh.
We're dealing with bees and chickens at the same time, aren't we?
That was right after I left home because I'm a.
Oh, that's right.
No, I was here. I didn't.
Okay, uh, so you two will own that issue and moving forward. Okay, that's it for new business. Unfinished business. Number 10A, 100 West Carolina Avenue, request to declare a dangerous building and authorize repairs. Brian?
Uh, yes, Honorable Mayor, Council, uh, again, um, I'm recommending no action on this. At this time, it looks like the property owners are making progress on the building, which is welcome. And, uh, just.
With that objection, we will move on. Okay, uh, item 10B, 122 South Tyler Avenue, request to declare a dangerous building and authorize removal. Brian?
Uh, yes, Honorable Mayor, Council, um, again, you do have the, if you remember, this was on last month's meeting agenda. Uh, you do have a memo from the building official, Dean Lloyd, um, he's basically considered the building a dangerous structure, it's stuck to survive in code. Um, you have the authority, uh, to declare a dangerous building and authorize for pay or removal, uh, demolition, et cetera. At the meeting last month, you, again, you decided to table the item. Um, and since that time, I did contact Peggy Figler with the Nottaway County Historical Association for Input. Uh, she's been in touch with the Department of Historic Resources staff. And as you know, we, um, we're in the process of, we've got grant money to, um, that is, DHR is going to put together a commercial historic district for us, basically. Um, we met with them, uh, three, four, five weeks ago and put together outlines of a proposed district. So we do not have a district now, but we have a proposed boundary for a, a commercial historic district. So it is, the property that we're talking about is within the proposed boundaries of the commercial district, uh, historic district. Elizabeth Lipford with DHR, I'll quote her from an email she sent. Historic 122 Tyler Street was built within the period of significance for the district. Still conveys its historic integrity of design for the materials. Uh, therefore, we consider this building to be contributing to the historic character of the district. The general, the DHR staff generally says that for any building within a district, um, just to let you know. Designation as an eligible or listed historic district does not prevent private property owners from altering or demolish the historic buildings. However, because it contributes to the historic character of the town, we encourage the owners of the town to consider alternatives to demolition, which is what they always say with buildings such as this. We recognize that the building is deteriorated and, uh, in deteriorated condition and understand that the cost of rehabilitation may be prohibitive, which I think that's the case. Uh, she further goes on to explain how tax credits could be used in the future to rehab the property, which is one of the main benefits of getting a historic district in the first place. As you are aware, the property is extremely deteriorated. If you go and look at the building, you can see how bad it is. Um, it presents a danger to the health and safety of the public. Furthermore, being practical, the likelihood of anybody investing any significant amount of money, particularly in the near term, to rehab this property is highly unlikely, in my opinion. Moreover, this building is not located within the main historic downtown area. We're talking about a building in the downtown block. Obviously, we want to save as many of those structures as possible. This is not in the downtown area. This is off the beaten path. Not a whole lot of people see this building. It needs to be torn down. And for all those reasons, I'm asking you to declare a dangerous building so we can start the process of doing asbestos studies, removal and demolition.
Did we ever figure out who owns it?
The, 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 we're doing a title search now. And, uh, because there, there's lack of records, they're having, the title company is having trouble figuring out who owns what. But they, it seems like they think, they're not 100% accurate, they think the railroad owns the land and probably, and somebody owns, owns the building. But regardless of who owns the building, I, I need y'all to, if y'all are willing, I need y'all to start the process to, start the legal minutia here to get notifications out.
I'll make a motion.
No, I wanted to make a comment.
Well, you can make a comment after there's a motion and a second and then any discussion.
I'll make a motion to declare a dangerous building.
Motion to make, to put a dangerous building, second by Councilman Abel. Uh, Councilman Yates.
As you'll all recall, I had asked if y'all would, and I think Sean supported this, um, to give me a, I would say 60 days or whatever, but we haven't come close to yet, um, to be able to meet with the wash bucket. I have already contacted the wash bucket. Um, due to the holidays and everything that's been going on, I have not been able, we have not been able to set up a meeting yet. We are trying to do that. And so once again, I, my plea is to allow me a little bit of time to see what I can do with this because I believe that the building is worth saving. Although it is not in the historic district of downtown, it sits on 460, which is where thousands and thousands and thousands of cars drive every day. So I still see the significance in trying to see if it can be rescued.
Uh, nothing in declaring a dangerous building precludes any organization or entity from trying to save it. Um, what would preclude any organization or entity from trying to save it is not knowing who the owner is. Um, but if council were to vote tonight to declare a dangerous building, your organization could still try to, uh, work to save it.
I know, I understand that. However, I think that once we declare it as a dangerous building, then that moves us just that much closer to a date as to when it's going to be torn down. be torn down, and I think under the circumstances, we've lost so many historical buildings in this town due to, and sometimes, in my opinion, reckless judgments, and now that we have an entity in town that really wants to work on these types of things, and I just think that it would behoove us, it's been there for 30 years looking awful, or, I don't know, I know it's looked awful since I've been here, I've been here 12. Nothing's changed about it, what is it going to hurt to give the wash bucket a little bit of time to do what they need to do without pushing the process forward? So, you know, I'm interested in revamping this town, revising, revitalizing this town, and revitalizing its history, and that is a historical building, and it's, and it looks like a historical building, everything you see about it is historical, you know? So, I say, hold off just a little while longer, so I can come back with the report.
Okay, thank you. Anyone, Councilman Davis?
Timeline, Brian, if we approve this tonight, what do you perceive the timeline before you're back?
It would probably be several months.
Back owed, so.
We've got to fit, we've got to find out who owns the property first, before I can send them, before Tesla, I send them the notices, you give them 30 days at least, and then you've got to line everything up. You're, you're talking two, three months at the very least.
Councilman Abel?
Oh. If you declare a dangerous build, she's still got two or three months to work on, then you can work with them, maybe, is what you're saying?
That's absolutely a possibility.
Yes.
It's not gonna be torn down tomorrow.
No.
It starts the clock.
But it starts the clock, Bill.
I went in that building many, many times when I was a police chief here, and I can tell you, I would hate to have to go with that to somebody.
My, my point to it was, we've already done 30 days, and I was willing to back to 30 days, we're still looking at another 60-day window that would give it, and, and I mean, if you come back to us and say, "Wash bucket's gonna do this," but I don't wanna hold up, I mean, we can very well pull the trigger on other places in town, we can trigger pull it on any, we still got one standing, and we're not. I would, my preferred to would be that we go ahead and approve it tonight, with the understanding that it's not gonna get torn down tomorrow, and that our organization would have time, and you'd be willing to hear if they come back, you know, we wanna do this, we would redress that before we.
Just, just to let everybody know, and I appreciate the effort from the wash, that's gonna take a ton of money to fix.
I get it, and if she comes back and says they don't have that ton of money, then Tony backs up the back end to it.
Well.
But if they do, if they find an investor, I don't want her to show up with her investor to be on the ground, so as long as there's some communication there about that process and the timelines, I would vote to approve what you're requesting with the understanding that Sue's gonna be working on this and that there be some communication there.
Let's see if there's any other, okay, oh, okay. So, the motion on the table is to declare 122 South Tyler Street a dangerous building and authorize removal. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we now move on to number 11, public comment. Is there any more public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
If you could come to the podium?
It's kinda hard for me to walk.
Oh, no, that's okay, then, you could, uh.
Um, can I be on the list, first of all, to get my neighborhood cleaned up, since it's been three years?
We do have an order.
We, we're going by a map of the different sections of town, and.
I saw it, but I couldn't read it.
What we're primarily doing is, is, I have the map.
Got it.
But anyway, what we're primarily doing, we're, we're picking up trash in the right of way, so we hope, we encourage residents to, with the help of their neighbors, to own their property.
I mean, I had a lot of snakes this year, and I never had one, but when the neighbors had to get their guns out and start shooting them, it got bad.
Although, if our neighbors had chickens, they'd probably be less dangerous.
All the other states are doing up going.
Good job.
I would entertain a motion to, to ban snakes in the town of Crewe.
I'm still having trouble with seeing a fire.
My husband's good with a shovel and snakes.
And some of Billy's neighbors are having a lot of trouble with urinating in public.
Billy, give me.
My neighbors?
No, they're not your neighbors, they're in your neighborhood doing it.
Stop it.
It's in the daytime.
In the daytime?
In the daytime. It has happened two or three times just here recently, but person.
Did you tell the chief which street you live on?
Would you let the chief look into that?
I could tell him the street. Driving you, driving you.
Driving it.
And the person can't get the license number because they can't see it of where they're going from their house.
Have you witnessed them doing this?
The lady's just doing the complaining.
Okay.
I've told him several times.
Well, I think Wendy is telling the chief now where you live, and, and we can look into that, and go from there.
On my street, I need to go back, I can't get the license number.
Looks a lot like a police car, don't it? It looks a lot like a white police car.
Okay, um.
And railroad is still needing help.
Oh.
Help, I mean, we're down to four or five volunteers.
I needed more information on that, because I approached my teenagers, and I had, I think it was about three or four of them that were interested, had said it was about three hours on Saturdays.
Councilwoman Foss, can you, uh?
Yes.
Offline?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Councilwoman Foss will get with you, and she has some potential volunteers, apparently. Any other public comments? Phil?
I have a question for Brian. I realize what you're, what you're doing as far as not replacing the employee or that position, and I, I totally understand that, but what do you think that might do as far as overtime being paid out, not having a man in that position?
They're only really going to, must be able to work a long break, so that really shouldn't impact it.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other public comments? Anyone else? Go once, twice, sold. Anything from, uh, council, any, any last closing comments before we go into closed session? Aaron? Wendy? Sue? Ann? Billy?
One, one, I believe he's gone.
Sean? Jess? Okay, hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3711A7, potential litigation, probable litigation. Motion by Councilman Abel, second by Councilman Davis, all in favor? We are in closed session. Thank you, everyone, for comment. Okay, at this time, we are out of closed session, and I will go around and, we, we need to certify that all that we discussed was pursuant to Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3711A7, probable litigation. Councilman Foss, do so certify? Councilman Davis?
Certify.
Skinson?
Certify.
Yates?
Certify.
Solid? Aaron? Okay, is there any other business before council at this time? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjury. Motion? We'll give it to Foss this time. All in favor? All opposed?